Are you ready now? Call the meeting to order, please. For public information, a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted on the east wall of the Commissioner Room. Roll call, please.
Meyer?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper?
Here.
Reisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
I don't.
Board?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move to approve the agendas submitted. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Finally got them.
Okay, close?
Close.
Five yeses?
Okay, want to remind everybody that the board reserves the right to enter to a closed session if we feel it's necessary. We don't believe we have anything scheduled for tonight. Next item is our reorganizational meeting. And we'll start by deciding who your chairman's going to be.
I will move Ken Meyer to continue to be the chairman of the board.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I do thank you for your confidence. I'll try to do my best. Record your votes, please.
Okay, close?
Close. Next item is to appoint the vice chairman of the board.
I'll move to make Mark Harris the vice chairman of the board.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All right, record your votes, I'm sorry.
Did you vote here?
Five yeses?
Thank you. All right, next one is to appoint the officials to the various offices. You all have a list of those on the back of the sheet that was furnished. Go and read them. You want them read for the, for the, uh, record?
Please.
Kelly. Facilities manager is Jay Steinle. County safety chairman is Jay Steinle. Central communication coordinator Tyler Rexus. Veteran service officer is Matthew Myers. Director of Public Works Highway Superintendent Steve Baird. Building and zoning director William Avon. Weed control authority superintendent Jeff Sladowitz. GIS mapping director Ashley Powell. General Assistance Administrator Lisa Ryan. Personnel director civil rights director Lisa Ryan. Management director Lisa Ryan. Detention center director Sheriff Overman. Information system director would be Bytes Corporation. Tourism director is Brenda Lysy. Transit manager is Kurt Richter. And Region 22 Emergency Management is Tim Newman. And I understand that these folks are not elected, they are appointed, which is what we're about to do here. If nobody has the... Any objections? I would entertain the motion to appoint the officials. That's read.
I move that we appoint all the said individuals to their appointed positions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Five yeses?
Yes. And just for information purposes, for those of you that don't know, each one of those individuals is assigned a representative from this board to assist in their decision-making or to help whatever needs to be done. And, uh, but we had a meeting two weeks, three weeks ago, however long it's been. It covered a lot of these so that we didn't take up time at this meeting to make sure that everybody was okay with what they're doing. Under the facilities manager, uh, it would be Mark Harris. County Safety Committee is Mike Blue. Central Communication Coordinator, uh, be myself. Veteran Service Officer is Mike Blue. Director of Public Works Highway Superintendent is Russ Reisig. Excuse me. Building and zoning director is Mark Harris. Weed control authority superintendent is Russ Reisig. GIS mapping director is Russ Reisig. General Assistance Administrator, uh, Charlie Knapper. Personnel director, civil rights director, uh, Lisa Ryan, and that would be me. Management accountant would be me. Detention center director would be me. Informations, uh, systems director or the Bytes Company would be Charlie Knapper. Tourism directors Charlie Knapper. Transit manager, uh, Kurt Richter would be Russ Reisig. And the Region 22 Emergency Management, uh, Tim Newman would be Mike Blue. So with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of those appointments.
I move approval of the commissioner liaison names that are assigned to each one of the, um, department officials.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes, please. Next item is consider designation of the 2024 official county... I'm sorry.
A little bit out of order. We went from the appointments of the officials, and then I had appointing the board to their committees and agencies.
Right. Isn't that what we just did?
We've done who their liaisons are and the offices, but I...
Oh, okay.
I had the multiple for you.
I'll go back and do that. Yeah. Uh, also, at the meeting that we had two or three weeks ago, uh, one of the things that some of you may not know, that as county commissioners, that each of us sit on several other boards that we, that we represent. Uh, as an example, the Aging Office, the Airport Authority, Building Utilization Committee, uh, I'll just, I'll go down and list them and let you know who that representative is. So the Aging Office of Western Nebraska be myself, and Charlie is the, uh, alternate to that authority, Airport Authority, and that's an ex officio position. He doesn't have a vote, but he does represent our board, would be Russ Reisig. Building Utilization Committee is Mark Harris. Communication Board, uh, the 911 Advisory Board is Mike Blue. Garen Valley Flood Control would be Russ Reisig. Uh, Panhandle Area Development and Enterprise Zone Committee, that's a monthly meeting, Charlie Knapper, and Russ is the alternate. Community Action Partnership of Western Nebraska, that'd be me. Uh, Region One Panhandle Health Group Governing Board, that would be me. Region One Office of Human Development, that would be me. Uh, Panhandle Developmental Disability Services, uh, that's an annual meeting. Uh, that's Charlie. Scotts Brook Green Maintenance Committee is Mark Harris. Sheriff Merit Commission would be Mike Blue with, uh, Mark as the alternate. Tourism Committee is Charlie Knapper. County Personnel Board would be Mark Harris, and Mike Blue is the alternate on that one.
Missed one.
Which one did I miss? Weed control. Oh, weed control, I'm sorry. Weed control will be, uh, Russ Reisig. Uh, Sarah Title III, LEPC Quarterly, be Charlie Knapper. Housing Authority Board, Public Housing Community Advisory Council, Mike Blue. Mapping Committee, and that's as needed, that would be Russ, and Mike is the, uh, alternate on that one. County Safety Committee is Mike Blue. Scotts Brook Moral County Extension Board, that's Mike.
It's Sears House.
You missed Sears.
Sears House would be, uh, Russ Reisig. I'm losing track here. Scotts Brook Moral County Extension Board would be Mike Blue. Regional Governance Group would be myself with, uh, Mark Harris as the alternate. Twin City Development, that's an ex officio monthly meeting, that'd be Charlie Knapper with, um, the alternate on that one. Uh, the Information Systems Committee, uh, they meet as needed, that would be Charlie. Uh, Correction Department Contact Person would be myself with Russ Reisig as the alternate. Region 22 Emergency Management Advisory Board, Mike Blue. High Plains Weeds Management would be Russ Reisig. Panhandle Public Health District, Charlie or Mark Harris, and the alternate on that. And the Heartland Express Association would be Mark Harris. One of the things we tried to do is split it up so there's probably five or six committees for each, for each commissioner. So we, we do more than just meet here twice a month. There's a lot of times and there's some weeks where some of us have four or five meetings that we need to go through. Hopefully, we're earning our buck and a quarter an hour or whatever we're getting paid. I'm not sure. So with that, I would entertain a motion for approval of the, uh, boards and agency list that I just said.
I move that you approve the, uh, list of the boards and agencies that were liaisons to.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I got a little discussion. I would like to find out, um, if we could remove High Plains Weed Management Association from this list.
Sounds like that doesn't exist anymore.
Yeah, that's, that's why I'm, um, we, we did a little research during the last week, and it looks like that, like, association doesn't, it looks like it's been dissolved.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know if you have a contact for those folks or...
That's correct, yeah.
Jeff is the guy.
Yeah.
He is High Plains Weed Management.
Okay.
And he said he doesn't have a grant anymore, and it went down in about 2018. Correct? Twenty... 2021? Sorry. Okay, so it's right.
So there's, it looked like on the, the website, it looked like it was about nine different counties that were part of the association.
Is our, on our panhandle area you're talking about, Jeff? That would be 11 counties. Got 10? Okay.
Yeah, it wasn't, it was, according to the map on the website, it was missing a couple counties from what we consider...
The panhandle.
The panhandle district. So that's how I came up with that.
Would you amend your motion, Mike?
Well, I was just wondering if, um, that's something that could be eliminated.
Okay, would you amend your motion, Mike?
I'll amend my motion to approve all the, uh, boards except the High Plains Weed Management.
Who seconded that?
I would second.
Okay, would you amend your second? You go along with that. Okay, is there any other further discussion? If not, record your votes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. The next item is to, uh, consider the 2024 official county newspaper. I think we had some discussion on that. Now, I guess that's the next... Scotts Brook County website adds additional method of providing notice of meetings. Did we ever find out for sure that it is necessary to put it in the paper? Is the website going to survive?
It still hasn't been published.
It still has to be published, okay.
I would make a motion that the Business Farmer be our newspaper of record.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I understand why we would want to do that somewhat, but I guess I'm, uh, I, I don't know what the circulation is of...
Are we gonna say we need to double check?
It has to have a circulation of...
It's gotta be a certain amount of subscribers.
Okay.
But, um...
We meet, we meet the requirements, I'm assuming.
With the Business Farmer.
With the Business Farmer.
I mean...
Um, we probably need to just get more input from Kelly. She's the one that's gonna be placing the ads and the announcements and all that kind of stuff. So...
Why'd you hit me with it today?
Okay, we can, we can, we can... Can we table this till next meeting, Kelly? Or do you have to know what it is now? We can continue with what, the way we're, we're going right now until we make a change.
This is by January 20th.
Okay, so we're good to go. We've got another meeting the 15th.
And it's actually the 16th.
Have another meeting the 16th. Have another meeting the 16th. Okay, we'll, we'll make the decision on the 16th. 16th, 15th's a holiday.
Yeah? What could it be?
Yeah, I know.
Could we ask the Business Farmer to be at it soon? The next meeting, a representative for... Maybe they wouldn't want to... Maybe they wanna, you know, know that we're considering them.
There was a time where there'd be three or four newspapers here bidding on that, and one would like to be part of it.
My simple issue would be that I know there's been some frustration with the Star Herald, and I understand why, and there continues to be when I paid my $430 subscription recently, um, I wasn't real happy about it either. But the fact for me is, if the circulation is substantially more with the Star Herald than anyone else, I believe we need to stay with the Star Herald in that we reach more people that way. And, um, even though it makes me unhappy somewhat, I, I believe in an effort, it's, it's in an effort to notify the public, and if that's what it is, then I think we need to go with either the, the highest circulation or something close to it would be what I think.
We used to, we actually used to have a choice. We really did. Uh, so, Kelly, can we find that out before the next meeting? I need somebody to... Who made the motion? I did. Would you rescind the motion?
I don't think so. We got a second.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, no.
We gotta vote.
Okay, well, we're not gonna vote on it. We're, we're going to table it.
We still have to vote that vote, don't we?
Vote it down.
Let's vote it down.
Okay, all right. Is there any other discussion?
Give me a minute.
If there's no other discussion, record your votes.
Hang on. I don't have it set up. So who's making the motion to...
Same motion. We have a motion and a second. We were in discussion when Charlie brought it up.
So we're, we're remaking a new motion?
No.
No, we have a motion on the, on the, on the, on the floor.
The motion is to make the Business Farmer the newspaper of record.
Right.
Then second, the second one.
Then we'll, we'll deal with it after what happens with this motion. Except, hang on, before we do anything, if this motion fails, the only one that could bring it back up is somebody who voted in favor of it. That's according to Robert's rules.
Okay.
I'll bring it up.
I'll know, I know what to do. Thank you.
Okay. Just, just a, just a warning.
It's good information.
Okay. Are you ready, Kelly?
Yes.
It's not up there yet. There it is.
Okay, record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close.
You have one yes and four nos.
Very good. Good move, Charlie.
Charlie.
Looks like Christmas.
All right. Now I need a, a motion to table, uh, the designation of the county newspaper until the next meeting, please.
I'll make a motion to, uh, table the decision on newspaper of record.
Okay?
Until the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Kelly, you're probably not set up. Why don't you just call roll?
Thank you. Knapper?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Reisig?
Yes.
Okay. Next item is consider designation of Scotts Brook County website as an additional method of providing notice of meetings.
Don't be shy.
Yeah, I would move that we, uh, would designate the Scotts Brook County website as an additional method of providing notice of meetings.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
We've been doing that, right?
Yes.
Very good. I like it.
Any other discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, close?
Close.
You have five yeses?
Thank you. Uh, we may have to table the next item then also. Consider designation of newspaper for 2024 delinquent tax publication. That would be my recommendation.
I will move to table the designation of newspaper for...
We'll, we'll make... Okay, we'll make that. Okay?
Chief's got something.
And the county forbid to choose successive weeks five.
Right, I think we, I think we determined that last time we talked about it. That 300 number, that seems to stick with me.
But we, we just need the Business Farmer to get us their circulation numbers.
Okay. All right, getting, getting, getting back to the delinquent tax publication, we have a motion. I, I didn't get a second on the motion. We may.
I'll second it.
Is there any other discussion? All right, just remind everybody that if this ma, motion passes, we don't have a newspaper because we're, we're voting, we're voting to table this until the next meeting, and that's not too late for you to do what you need to do, is it, Heather? Okay. All right, so the, the motion, the motion is to table this item until we discuss who the newspaper's going to be, then we can go back and visit it again. Record your votes, please. A yes vote will table it until the next meeting.
You have four yeses and one no.
Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. Anybody wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval as submitted.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
All right, I'll second. Is there any discussion? Record your votes.
Okay to close?
Close.
Five yeses?
Yes, thank you. Need a motion to move into Board of Equalization.
Move to move into Board of Equalization.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes.
Five yeses?
Thank you. Heather?
So I have two different sets of vehicle exemption applications. Both of these are their annual, um, renewals for all of their current vehicles. The first one is for Panhandle Daycare Center. They only have one vehicle that they request exemption for. It's for transportation of schoolchildren to and from school, also shopping for groceries for the daycare center, um, and business-related activities, also for educational trips during the summer. Um, it's a 2014 Kia, and it has a tax loss of $57.
Okay.
It would be my recommendation to accept it.
To accept it, okay. What's board's pleasure?
I move that we approve the vehicle exemptions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
This is on the one.
Right.
You have five yeses?
Thank you. Next item, consider approval of 25 motor vehicle exemptions for Region One Office of Human Development.
So they have, um, 25 different vehicles, um, that are all tax exempt and all were previously tax exempt. Um, the total tax loss for this would be $5,364.80. Um, they are used for transportation of individuals with developmental disabilities from home to day services, work, doctor's appointments, entertainment, shopping, and recreation. And these vehicles have all previously been exempt. They range from 2012 vans, which they have quite a few, to 2020, um, vans, uh, that have all previously been exempt. Do you have any questions on those?
No change.
Yeah, they're all for, and they are a tax exempt organization. Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Motion for approval?
I move we approve those exemptions for Region One Office of Human Development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Record your vote.
Any five yeses? Russ? Russ, did you get your microphone? Thank you.
I was just whispering.
We're gonna attach one right, right here on the bottom of your chair. Okay, next item is receive the tax list corrections. Everybody's had a chance to look them over. So I entertain a motion for approval as submitted.
I move that we approve the tax list corrections as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Call it. Record your votes, please.
You have five yeses?
Thank you. Need a motion to come out of Board of Equalization?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call a roll. Record your votes.
Ken and Russ. And you have five yeses?
Thank you. All right, Roden Bridge, Steve?
At the last meeting you recall, I announced we received our round eight bridge match from Endot the day after, and we got the agreement in the mail. So, uh, first object here is just to, we need a motion and approval of the resolution approving the chairman's signature on the agreement for that.
The board looked it over.
Like all the other bridge agreements, I think they're standard. I think the only thing they changed is the bridge number and the project number and the date, so...
And the amount.
And the amount.
And the amount.
That's what it's doing here, specif...
Yeah, and specifies the amount and what bridge number it is in the state bridge system. I guess just to clarify, there was a little confusion last time on the amount. So that 250,000 is the max they will contribute. It's a 55-45 match is what it is.
55 for us?
55 for them, 45 for us. So if the bridge, uh, project comes in, it's only 300,000, I'll pay up to 55%. The rest is on us, so...
250,000, 250 is that max?
Up to the 250 is the max on this one.
Okay. I move approval of the program agreement for Project STWD CBMP eight and C-79442.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any further discussion? All right, record your votes. All right, record your votes.
You have five yeses?
Thank you. Okay, there you go, Steve. Uh, next item, discuss fuel bid.
Uh, so it's that time again for us to do our fuel bids here in January, so I just pretty much put this on here. Uh, basically, because I know we're supposed to be giving the, a gas county gas station put in, I guess. So I was just gonna notify you that I'm gonna go ahead and bid out my gas for us, because not knowing when that is gonna be up and going.
When you're ready.
Uh, you know, I'm thinking Jay's thinking March. I'm gonna go ahead and get our gas locked in for the year for it, and then next year. If we want to sort of get our gas for that shop out of the fueling station, then we could go ahead and go that route, so.
You're gonna roll rate his out for eight months left over then, or what do you think?
I'm just, I was just gonna do, yeah, I was just gonna do my bid for my thirteen thousand gallons that we use for the year. And then um if you guys wanna do a bid for the fueling station, uh that would probably be under, I guess, I don't know, Scottsburg County as a whole and who gets billed and who's paying for that. You can do a bid or you can wait till you get closer to the time to to do it. I don't know how you guys wanna do that. I can make one out for it if you wanna do it now and.
I prefer getting a quote at least. We don't have to, we don't have to accept anything. I'd like to get a quote, so Jay kinda has a rough idea.
I have, I have for a give me the estimate with our gas this year, use this year, we can kind of get a gallon visual, make a difference on the price of our gas.
So he'll include that with his, with his RFP then, right?
Um, I will probably keep that one separate.
Yeah, or you will be separate from what you're doing.
Because my bid, we're only asking for thirteen thousand gallons. I'm gonna assume they're gonna be asking I don't know how much gas, seventy thousand gallons of gas. Their bid will probably be cheaper than mine because of the quantity. So they're gonna bring theirs out and tankers, big semi tankers rather than a truck or a butt, like but their gases.
Can we combine it all maybe in the future, you think, or all but what goes to other two places?
For the for the gas, we could probably, yeah. Um, as long as there's a way to divide out the costs and who's gonna do the billing to, if it's a road pickup that fills up over there, who's gonna be doing the billing or sheriff's department, whatever.
Our pump system is gonna do that.
That will do, that'll do that for us.
You'd have a common.
It's gonna do most of it.
Right, but she was gonna be.
Someone still gonna have to reconcile.
Right, somebody's still gonna have to put.
And I think this is maybe, this might be a good segue into another uh accounting inventory item that we might wanna discuss in the future. Uh, rather than having all these, you know, if we're gonna have, someone's gonna have to reconcile this, this fuel. Um, we're gonna have multiple apartments building up here, the same pumps, same tanks, all this stuff. Um, I would kinda like the same theory and process behind our office supplies, ink, toner, printer cartridges, uh even your pens and pencils, notebook paper, reams of paper, I think all that should come from a central supply. Um, and that, that's gonna come from I know these guys don't wanna do it back there, but I think that's.
You just got rid of it.
Yeah, they used to do it.
Yeah, that all, that all used to come out of, uh, yeah.
There's still remnants of it downstairs, isn't there? It all gone now?
You just got rid of it.
Like about the time I came on, they were dissolving the purchased labor, so that's my. Yep.
Didn't we call it simple purchasing or something like that?
Don't, don't we, don't we get a better deal if we buy a lot rather than apartment buying their own?
But I think I understood it came, came down to, yeah, you couldn't get a better deal, but the quality of paper that was being purchased was not good quality.
Then you have one person that's happy and ten people that aren't and that's the quality and I can understand that the logistical problem that come with it. But, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with the concept, but I can understand some of the problems.
So I, I guess, yeah.
Anyway, my point is, my point is someone's gonna have to reconcile the gas station. You don't wanna, I don't wanna put it on Lisa. It needs to go somewhere else. I wanna put on Kelly. Maybe it fits best under Kelly, I don't know, but um.
I think it fits best under Lisa. Yeah, same.
Doesn't that go through the point? Think we should get back to central supply. I'm disappointed that it was just all um and I don't think we've ever heard of it. In the five years we've been, six years we've been here now, I don't think we've heard of this ever.
Think you're probably right. Some reason, I, I think maybe a facilities meeting or something, I was getting a tour of the basement and there was a screened off area down there and I was told what that was.
That's now my storage.
Yeah, so.
So we gave up and we created a new office.
That's really the way I think I did it.
I think there's substantial cost savings there, have a central supply, but um as far as fuel bids, did you have any more to add on?
No, I just was gonna let you know, I can go ahead and put my gas in the fuel bid for this year and then once the system is up and running next year, if we can throw a lot of gallons into their into the central, whatever you wanna call it, fueling stations bid, and we could add our gallons to that per hour. And the bid will be due the day of the meeting, so you won't have a beforehand vendor said they wanted it as late as possible for the main meetings, they're not sticking their necks out.
Understandable.
Right, the oil prices.
Um, I guess I would just like to, to test the uh temperature of the board on um a local reference on fuel suppliers. It's something I'm, I'm considering asking for. Um, I think our local uh suppliers have invested in our county. They have payrolls in our county, they have assets in our county, paying tremendous amounts of property tax on real property, personal property, that sort of stuff. So I would like to put a stipulation, you know, at an eight or ten percent preference.
Mighty big.
Towards, well, maybe that.
You know, State of Wyoming has a preference like that for contractors.
Okay.
Local contractors get a five percent.
Five percent?
Yeah.
Whatever standard.
So if you're, you know, I can be five miles from Borkington, but they have a five percent bid across the location.
And the issue is that, then that also um um then it causes everybody else to do the same thing in reverse to us.
It comes back the other way.
Right. It'll bite you. Back the other way. And it might bite you and may not.
What'll happen is you'll eliminate a lot of people's bid, because once, once you set that, a lot of those fellows, if they're not right here. Then you don't know what, then you don't know how you stand. You have no idea where you would have been once they drop out of the bidding. And I would say everybody should, they're right here, they should be able to deliver that fuel cheaper, because they bring that truck home at night. They don't have to haul it back empty. They're coming here loaded, but that truck can sleep here empty. They got, the other, the guys from Cheyenne or North Clatworth where he's buying fuel, gotta take that truck back to that town empty. The green dropping in our town is your preference. I mean, when you unload, when you unload in your hometown, that's your preference.
I think then.
If I was hauling, when I run a truck, we, we run a lot of trucks, and when we run a truck, when we don't, you know, I don't like driving a hundred miles back home empty. I'd rather just pull in and park, you know, and that's your preference. Because you live right here. You should be able to drop it for us.
We need to define what's a local company, um uh would have to be defined for sure. But my point for this today, tonight would be that we um possibly leave it as we have been for this specific one. Maybe if we're going to do something like that or choose to do something like that, maybe we could have it ready by the time we would um do requests for proposals on the fuel station and make a decision at that point if we're gonna give a a local preference, which would then also then be rolled over into the next year for your stuff as well. I don't know, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is that if we next year, if we have the fuel station in place, and of course your things, that I'm assuming that we would combine as much of that as we could to be.
The gas part anyway, yeah. At that, at the gearing facility, it wouldn't make much sense for the Mitchell or Minotaur guys to come up, get gas.
Right.
You know, and they, they only have thousand gallon tanks. You know, we would have to maybe reach out and see what type of bid I would get. Only get, you know, gearing uses the most gas, probably five thousand gallons is what they use roughly. The other ones are using the other three thousand and two thousand gallons for the year. My quote for that gas would probably be higher, because it's not as many gallons than, you know, what the gas station one is gonna be, so it might not be beneficial to scrap the gas in gearing and, because it might affect my gas price in Minotaur and Mitchell. Does that make sense? Because my bid will probably come in higher, rather than two eighty a gallon, because they're only delivering five thousand gallons, it might be three dollars a gallon. Or if I order ten thousand, it might drop it down to two eighty. Something to think about, I don't know, but.
Well, I'm just thinking you had a request for proposals as you have in the last year, two years, three years. That's what I think you ought to do.
We're taking care of the taxpayers' money. I think that we are to get the lowest bid, which in turn helps whoever's selling fuel right here, because it's gonna lower their, their taxes and everything else, I mean. We go pay a higher price. I don't think that's near justice to what we got voted here.
I guess the only issue that we have is we don't have any specific thought about completion date, do we, Jay? As far as that. So you're hoping it'll be that soon?
In our, in our current bid, our current runs out when?
It's over now.
It's over now. So you're paying pump prices now?
No, we're full. We filled up at the end of December here.
Okay.
So you haven't.
So we're full, so we're good to the next, the, the next meeting. So I, I will make a comment, not, I'm not badmouthing any local vendors, but we send bids out to uh Frenchman Valley Co-op, uh Wesco, uh Panhandle Co-op, Sat Brothers, duly oil. Normally, we only get two or three back, which is pretty typical. Currently, our vendor is not local. Um, if you remember last year when we ran over on two thousand gallons on fuel, the vendor we had then charged us regular pump price rather than the bid price when we went over on fuel. Uh, this year, we went over again, of course, because of the blizzard is, was a real issue of this one, we thought. Um, the, the vendor on this one charged us it's our regular bid price.
What he told you to do though, right? I remember you telling me that earlier this year.
Just keep that in mind. I'm not badmouthing but local vendors, I'm just saying. I thought that was reasonable, so. For a hundred and eleven thousand gallons of diesel last year, so eleven thousand uh gas, so. But the three months of blizzards and snow, that's second part, so.
The diesel part of this isn't gonna change as far as it being the roads department. The fuel station is all gonna be gas.
Yeah, you're the only one that's a diesel, Steve.
Yes, yes, I don't believe anybody else has diesel. I think Jeff probably is a little spray rigs, Kubota's are diesel, but that's my, that's minimal gallons, so. That's all I had for that.
Very good. Thank you, Steve.
Steve. On the page with holes.
Uh, under general agenda, consider resolution to allow the treasurer to invest the twenty twenty four excess funds.
Oh. This no, I, did you want me to? Oh, I thought just the chairman had signed. Okay. Okay.
Go ahead.
Um. Okay, so every year in Janu- January, I bring you these resolutions. First resolution has to do with um allowing the treasurer's office to invest excess funds anytime we have funds. Um, do you want me to read the whole resolution?
It's not necessary.
Do you have any questions about it?
Anybody have any questions on the resolution? You know, same thing you do every year.
It's the same thing we do every year. I was asked earlier by Kirk, um, any interest that we make does go back into the general fund, not into like a specific department, so all the interest goes back to the county general fund.
Okay. Entertain a motion for approval then, please.
I move that we approve the uh resolution for, for the treasurer to invest the excess fund.
Second? Any discussion? Votes?
Five yeses?
Thank you. Consider resolution set for twenty twenty four delinquent rate for insufficient funds, Heather?
So this again is another resolution that we do every year. Um this is a, a resolution that we've ended up having to use, because um we do have other resolutions in place where um we have funds that we can borrow from if we have a, a grant fund or something that's it, that has a negative balance, because this would be what we would use if we didn't have that. But by state statute, we have to set this resolution every year. And last week when I sent you guys the resolutions, I also did send you the statute that goes along explaining that. Do you guys have any questions on that one?
What did we do last year for?
We did like a half a percent, and I just changed it to one percent since we're getting um not just four percent on everything that we're investing. We used to keep the warrant rate as the same percentage that we were getting paid in interest, but several years ago you had wanted me to lower it, so I did.
We're basically borrowing from ourselves.
This is, this would be like, this would give you the ability to, if you had a fund that was in the negative, to loan them money, but to make them pay, you know, at a percentage of interest to loan them money. But because we have resolutions saying that we can borrow money from the Keno Fund and from um capital improvements and inheritance taxes, we don't generally use this.
And so if we did, it's still us borrowing from us.
Basically, it would be you borrowing from you, but yeah, with the, with the ability to say that you can charge a little bit extra.
Do you ever have to borrow from like Scottsburg Schools Fund or anything? So it is.
Um.
Go to that.
If it's not a county fund and they have a negative fund balance at the end of the month, I can't close the month end until they pay us to put them, yeah.
Never asked that question. Thank you.
Because I don't, I guess our our form of accounting is kind of like the state budget, all of our funds have to have a positive balance. So I got use of Voca Grant, for example, we've had to borrow money from the, for the Voca Grant um because that grant, those grant payments never came through.
I'm over approval of the resolution for delinquent rate on insufficient fund warrants. Um, is this also a resolution to deposit excess funds? Is that part of this? Okay.
Sure, second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? Record your votes. Are we clear?
Yes.
Thank you.
Got ahead of myself.
Next item, uh, just consider approval of bank depositories for twenty twenty four. First National Bank, NPAIT, Pinnacle Bank, Black Valley Bank, Riverstone Bank, US Bank, NFIT, Union Bank, Nebraska Class Public Trust and Heather O'Schall.
So basically, you can't get rid of me quite that fast there. Um, this basically, um these are the banks that have asked to be depositories for money for Scottsburg County this year. Um, I don't use the last two banks that um have asked, but should we so choose to use them, um this would give us the ability to move money to them. Um for the most part, our money stays local and we have money in N paid also. Because N paid for the better part of the last year has paid us over five percent. Because in paid, for the better part of the last year, has paid us over five percent interest, which is far better than any local bank will.
Good, thank you. We use all of those accounts down, all those banks and all.
Um, I don't use the N fit, the Union Bank, and I don't use Nebraska Class. I, I could if, if they wanted me to, or if, if I wanted to, I guess. Yeah, yeah, we. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, entertain a motion for approval, I'll make a motion for approval, second.
Second.
A discussion. Record your votes.
Just a quick question, do we, do we have anything at U S Bank right now?
Um, we had a small account at U S Bank and I did close it this last year because the interest rate was less than half a percent. Um, so I closed it and I moved it into one of our other accounts. Um, and like Kelly has money at Riverstone Bank. Um, and I don't have anything, I guess I don't have anything at Pinnacle Bank, but they are a county bank, so it is an option. I have been trying, for the last year, I've been trying to like call around and shop for better interest rates and we've actually made quite a bit more money by doing that.
Thank you, Heather. All right, thank you.
Then can we do a, should we take a, a break?
You've been a break? Okay, take, just a quick one. Okay, folks, let's uh, let's get back to, back to the meeting, thank you very much for allowing us to take a break. Okay, the next item is to discuss and consider development of R F P for consultation firms to assist Scottsburg County Commissioners and Scottsburg County Planning and Zoning Commission, updating the Scottsburg County's comprehensive plan, which provides guidance and regulations to renewable energy. Charlie?
Yeah, so, uh, you know, one of the things we've learned um, in the last three or four weeks now is, is that the Scottsburg County uh, comprehensive plan was last updated in nineteen ninety seven with a um, an addendum or an appendix uh, for renewable energy. When, what, was that appendix or addendum done after that time? Okay, so, um, I, you know, there's, there's several counties back east. Uh, Gage County, Douglas, Sarpy, Lancaster, uh, Red Willow is in the middle of a um, pretty heated um, process of updating their comprehensive plans. Um, but what we've, what we've found here in Nebraska is that um, a lot, there's a lot of counties that don't have updated comprehensive plans uh, to address um, opportunities um, like, like we're facing. Um, and so we need to, we need to update our comprehensive plan. So I would like the county to go out for bid um, so that we can um, or really request a, a request for proposal rather than a bid. Because we need some help, this is bigger than anything that we've ever addressed, Mark Harris said this a couple of weeks ago. This is the biggest thing that, that we've addressed as a board since Mark and I have been on the board and then really maybe the one of the biggest things this county has faced since the decision to build the new detention center. Um, and I don't, I don't want to get this wrong, I want to get this right and I want some guidance from, from folks who have worked in this industry for, for, for decades. Um, just want to make sure that we're protecting our constituents and also um, positioning the county for, for growth um, and opportunity, so. I know we've talked about it, I just wanted to hear on it as an action item so that we could um, at least um, direct staff to create this R F P and, and get it out there to the public.
Okay, Charlie, also understand that, and I have no problem doing that, I think they all, everything needs to be up, upgraded and whatever. But when the permit was filed, it was filed under the current comprehensive plan that we have now, so we cannot, even if we come up with something new and shiny and everything else, it's not going to apply to.
That's not necessarily true because it's never been accepted.
They've already made, they've already made, they've already made application, once they make application.
We have not had anybody.
It, it doesn't matter.
So I talked to, I did talk to Billy Maven and I, and, and I did talk to some folks down in Red Willow County today and, and basically the moment we hand that application out, we're saying you can apply for conditional use under our current.
Our current standards, that's correct.
This isn't, this isn't for this project, this is for future, it's not for this application, it's for future applications. Um, this, this isn't gonna be the last renewable energy project that gets proposed in Scottsburg County. It's not gonna be, there're gonna be more applications, there's gonna be more other companies coming here and, and one of the, one of the um, concerns I have is that these companies are looking at places like Scottsburg County who have outdated comprehensive plants. Um, because it, it, it makes it easier for them to come in and, and um, apply for a conditional use permit. Um, we need to, that's why we need, we need to do this for future projects.
Bill, Bill would have the best accessible, accessibility to somebody to do that for us. I'm assuming, there are, yeah, there are companies and there are people out there that do that sort of thing, yeah. That you, that you feel comfortable working with, I guess.
I think we ought to work with the board on that.
What's that?
I think should work with the board possibly on that.
Well, I was, I just got a name of one guy to help Red Willow County and that's just one I, and the, and Red Willow County said they, they put out an R F P for the same thing and they only got one back. Um, but I, so I just have one name, I'm sure Billy has more names.
The, the changes to be brought before us for approval.
Well, I'm sure that's right.
But the, the, the actual working of it and whatever would be done by a individual working along with Bill. And then it would all come to us for final approval. Are you saying that you'd rather be in on the, on the actual?
Well, no, just so we're on it, one end or the other of it.
Yeah, we would be, yeah, we, it, it would come to us for final approval. Correct, yeah. We'd be hiring the firm and then, and then approving whatever changes are, are necessary to update it. Yes. That's exactly right. And then it would come to us, yeah, they, they'd come to us for final approval then.
So one, one, one part of this R F P I would like is, you know, I, I don't want just a written proposal, I would like it, you know, if we get multiple proposals, I'd like to interview um, the firms that. And kind of go from there.
That's fine, I have no problem with that.
Do you have any idea what this might cost?
Uh, Red Willow paid less than ten thousand dollars.
What type of agency does this?
So.
Environmental attorney, I believe.
Yeah, so this uh, Red Willow hired a group called Marvin Keith Consulting and he worked in renewable energy sector for twenty-five years and then he went out on his own and, and created a consulting company to help, help counties build a framework.
On just the flat comprehensive plans, Jeff Kelly used to do that through pad. When he was, when he was the executive director there, it was for smaller communities and not, not for large communities, but he had some experience with that. But we're looking more specific for renewable energy insertion into this along with.
Well, I, I think the renewable energy piece is definitely part of the next comprehensive plan, I don't think it's.
It's not all of it.
The, I mean, we need it, I mean, Spencer's ninety-seven.
No, that's, that's, that's what I mean, that's what I'm saying.
It's like, that's just a, that's just a chapter in the.
You would need, whoever, whoever you're going to hire needs to be uh, schooled in, in renewable energy.
Yes.
Stuff, so uh, Jeff Kelly's not gonna be able to do that.
Um, and then the other piece, um, there was one other item I wanted to to bring up on this, and maybe it was just that this is a piece of the comprehensive plan.
And, and understand the comprehensive plan is a, just that, a plan. It's just a, a, a good example that Scottsburg, City of Scottsburg Comprehensive Plan thought that all the residential is gonna move west. Right about the area where Walmart and Home Depot are at right now, so it's, it, it's movable and it's workable, so it, yeah.
But one of the things uh, Red Willow County did when they hired this um, Marvin Keith is he, Marvin Keith came out and held two different public forums, kind of like M P P D did at the Hampton.
With their stuff, yeah.
You could go around the conference center and learn about all the different phases of the project and stuff like that and engage public input and um, you know, I, I think, I think that's part of the process here. Um, you know, to hear from constituents. Um, what, what, what kind of opportunities they want to um, benefit from uh, going forward, so.
What is this person's specific background that you're talking about? Engineer or attorney or?
He hasn't, he, he's not an attorney, he's more. From what I could gather, I didn't talk to this Marvin, I talked to a Red Willow County Commissioner and he described Marvin Keith as someone who um, was an executive in the renewable energy space. But it's about as specific as I can get. So you've heard of this group?
Yeah, I have.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and you're gonna, and you're gonna want to look at more than just the renewable energy to see if there's anything else that needs to be updated since, since the nineties. You, you look, you look at the whole thing, that's correct.
Just that there are two years. You probably reach out to Andy Ford, to the city.
But I think, you know, I think there's ways that we can you know, craft this comprehensive plan to encourage projects like this. Um, other, you know, other large scale um, industrial sites uh, that don't have to be within the two mile jurisdiction of a city or something that's out in the county. Um, we just want it to be done the right way and to protect the folks.
But again, the.
But also encourage, we want, we want to encourage people to come here and build.
The comprehensive plan is, that's exactly what it is, it's not a plan, it's not a, it's not a set stone, set of rules and regulations, that that's what you're going to comply with, right, because that's, that's totally different.
No, I, I, I imagine a comprehensive plant to be more of a, an invitation or industry to.
Well, yeah, at the same time, it also protects neighbors and, you know, livestock in areas.
Yeah.
But that's what your zoning regulations do.
Are going right now.
Well, we'll, we'll find that out when we, when we look it over, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I guess um, uh, you've already said it and I agree with the thought that I, what I absolutely will be against is if the, this comprehensive plan process makes things more restrictive, more cumbersome on economic development in general, then I'm gonna be unhappy with the decision we made and um, uh, so I just want to be real careful in this process.
I don't, I absolutely agree with you, Mark, we don't wanna, we don't want to discourage development by any stretch of the imagination.
And you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. So uh, I would entertain a motion then that we uh, allow Bill to check into, put out an R F P for a consulting firm that deals with renewable energy plus the other things that need to be looked at within that comprehensive plan.
No, I, I have no business overseeing. I just know this is the direction we need to go.
Okay, just get us, get us a number of votes or something.
Well, I would be um, willing to offer a motion to direct Bill to um, look into that and prepare a request for proposal to bring back to this board to um, approve it or whatever, or give comments. Um, and um, so if anyone doesn't see any problem with that, I'll put it in the form of a motion.
Okay, we do have a motion, is there a second?
I'll think.
Under the discussion portion, I'll just, I'm sure, Billy, did you got, you got ahold of all the commissioners with the information that you called me about? Okay, about the company is going to do a public forum in February, March, something like this. Okay, so there won't be any action taken by the planning commission for a while on this, is, is that? Okay, it'll be a March, a March decision, okay, very good, thank you. All right, is there any other discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, pause.
Yes.
You've got five guesses?
Okay, and I apologize, I should have asked whether you had anything to add, any of that, you're just listening, okay? All right, no problem, I, I apologize for that. Next item discussing, consider moving November fourth regular meeting to Tuesday, November twelfth due to the twenty twenty four election on November twentieth. That's gonna be a busy day for you, Kelly.
Common practice as we do it and I'm just kind of happy with myself that I thought of it before it was a scramble to ask you guys if it was okay.
Okay.
I would, I would move that we um, move our nor, our regularly scheduled meeting for November fourth to be held on November twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Oh, second. Second, a discussion. Record your votes. He just didn't do it.
I think he does it too soon.
I told, no.
Okay, next item is discuss, consider possible work sessions for any.
I'm listening.
Thank you, discuss and consider possible work sessions uh, any months with five Mondays, January, April, July, September and December. Yeah.
I just thought I'd throw it out there for us to think about also.
We can uh, we can make the decision where we're going to do it or not, I guess.
I just wanted to.
There's no reason, just have a meeting, just have a meeting. But normally, there's enough, enough things going on that they usually become necessary, actually.
I would like to, let's, let's just try this for a year and have a workshop on the fifth Mondays of every month. Maybe not, maybe.
Why are you ruining my?
Well, you know, it just seems like we can leave a lot of stuff on the table. If you have a work session scheduled, it'll remind us to bring up items. I just, I just really think that, you know.
One of the, right, one of the things, the way, the way it used to work, and I, I've talked with Kelly about this, that if there were any department heads or elected officials that had anything to bring up, that they would schedule that. We would start it at four in the afternoon or whatever, so four to four fifteen was the registered deeds office or whatever it was. And that would be their time to, to come and visit and express any concerns or anything that's, that's happening. And it, it makes it go a lot smoother, you try to keep on track, so we don't, we, we weren't on track always, but we tried to, tried to keep it that way. So it would be something that didn't have to take up time in a regular board meeting, but yet we could still, we didn't vote on anything.
Don't take any action.
We don't take any action on anything, it's just a discussion.
Well, I, I will, I'll make a motion that we have work sessions in January, July, September and December, skip April. Starting at four thirty.
And why do you want to skip April? Okay, well, if you can't be here, you can't be here.
Well, plus I.
I can probably.
Okay, all right, the motion is for January, July, September, and December. Is there a second to the motion? And we can still, come April, if we decide that we have something, we could still add a fifth Monday, that's not a problem. Is there a second? I only need one. I'll second it. Is there any other discussion?
I'll just mention, I'm voting no because. I don't like the December one in there at all. I just think you're asking for. Too much. For most people.
I will.
Well, but but the way that it's written here is discuss, consider possible work sessions on those pages. Doesn't mean that we absolutely have to.
Fifth Monday.
And that's okay. You're keeping it in front of us, and that's fine. Okay, any other discussion? Record your votes.
So did this one include April or not?
This motion does not.
It did include April.
Does include December.
But we may be in a situation where we may have to do. We can change it whenever we want to, guys, that's.
Got three of you, that's enough.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Got four yeses?
Okay. Next item is discuss consider setting of salary resolution for the commissioners.
Anyway. This is just, we have two commissioners up for reelection in twenty twenty four. And. We're supposed to do this, and the salary.
That doesn't go into effect until.
It's mirroring what you guys set in place for twenty. Twenty-three to twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
But we do have two. Two people will be on the general ballot, and we're supposed to do this by January fifteenth.
Yeah.
And then it like you said, it didn't go into effect. After the election.
The twenty twenty six. Yeah, twenty twenty six.
We're, we were talking about it at a panhandle meeting and. Very few of us have.
Remember ever doing it this way.
I you haven't.
Why? Why I don't remember? Okay, I would, I would entertain a motion, whatever is on your head.
So this is for. This resolution is to keep. The salary the same.
Yes.
But can we tie that to the steps? So we don't mess with it. I mean, if it was on the steps.
It has to be done by resolution.
Well, we have, I realize, but if we made a resolution, so we tie it to the step procedure we use for everyone else, then we don't vote on it anymore. It would just be built into the steps.
You you have to do this by law.
Every year or every election.
Every year prior to the election.
Election year. This is election year. Every two years. Should we do it every two years?
We're going to from now on, yes.
That's mandatory, is that?
State statute.
Are you saying that in the past, we did it every fourth?
Only.
Did it when they we had elected officials?
Right.
It was included with the.
But we have a, we have a neighboring county that has a public defender that's an off year, so I think that's more. How we got it figured. I don't understand why how they decide when.
Yeah, and this one, this, no matter what it is, it doesn't go into effect till twenty twenty-six anyway, correct?
Twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-five.
But it's matching what you've already set for twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-six. Let's be changing wording, and I did run this by Dave.
Okay with you, Dave.
This talks about, this resolution says. The county board of commissioners has reviewed a study of salaries of county officials. Prepared by NACO. We have done like that?
Yeah, but I probably could have taken that out.
Yeah, the last time we did it, we were looking at all the county officials, all the other elected positions. So in January of. And. That study suggested that we were. Almost twenty forty percent behind schedule at the end. But we voted to raise the other elected official, we kept the commissioners the same.
Hey, so it's your pleasure, folks. I can't believe we get paid to have this much fun, can you?
Well, I moved that our commissioner salary remained the same.
The motion remains the same. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Record your votes.
Okay, to post?
Close. Thank you. Okay, we have any old business? I'll open up for public comments. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak to the board at this time? Understand we won't be taking any action on anything. Hearing none, we'll go to board and staff reports. Start with the board. Russ, do you have anything?
Pretty much touch on everything, and they're getting ready to pour the. Bridge out at the box called over by Lyme, and I think. Tomorrow or Friday, probably. Other than that, that's about all we got going on.
Any concern in that change order? Us to pay?
There's no change. Steve and the engineer denied it.
Yeah, Mike, you have anything?
Uh, nothing.
Two things I mentioned. Prior to the meeting, some of you may have heard of it, some of you didn't, but. We, this is the month we need to do a jail tour. Kelly's got it, I think, on the schedule for our next meeting. So we'll need to be doing that. Also, want to. Bring up the thought, I've brought it up a couple of times, and it's my own fault that I haven't. Pursued it further, but I'm glad Dave's here tonight because. I've spoken to Dave about this prior, but I. Have talked about the thought of us having a county attorney to take care of civil things. So that Dave can focus more on the criminal things and. The. So I'm still of that opinion, and many of you have expressed that you're interested in that. And I think that I just need to try and. Do more work on it to. Figure out the process of some kind of an RFP or. And Dave, maybe you can suggest some things maybe for us. But we still, I'm still of the belief that that's important. And that we need someone to do that, and I'm going to continue to pursue that process. Making a person available not only to. To the commissioners at commissioner meetings and commissioner issues, but it could also. Make someone available for. Department heads and or. Elected official department heads that could. You utilize some of that process. There's still, Dave would be a. Important, intricate person in this process. And we'd certainly have to define things, but I think as simple as criminal versus civil. And go from there. Dave, any thoughts on it?
No, I think that's a good idea. I, the last three years, we've been understaffed, and for the last six months, I've been. Well, half staff. And so our case load is a little, uh, two attorneys stay out, although we don't have the experience to. Complicate or complex cases, I can't handle them, you know. Cases that are potential of kind of life sentence. I have to take all those. That's why I'm here on Saturdays and Sundays and holidays and. Not take any time off, besides, I can't do it, the worst guy to get them. And I don't know when I'm ever gonna get staff, at least staff. Try and hire a couple, they're gonna be fresh out of law school. And it's just, at this point, it's just not possible. Like, I can't do any more work. That's just, is the best way to say it.
The optimal thing would be to have somebody in your office that can handle all of these things that that Mark's talking about. But where you're short-staffed anyway, you need everybody for your criminal cases. There isn't anybody that can handle anything, civil cases. Or reviewing contracts or whatever has to happen. We just.
This last thing on my plate.
Yeah.
Well, and I want to remind you that we do have the NERMA, NERMA legal line we can use for contract review and for other, and we have the NERMA HR. Person to run things through as well. I mean, and those are included in our insurance premiums.
And I would not be suggesting that we don't use those things first, if at all possible. And or if we had a. Attorney doing something, that they possibly use those resources first. So they don't have to do all the background work on a particular subject.
Yeah.
But I guess. I'm going to continue to pursue that, hopefully. Harder than what I have been.
Right, hopefully before budget time, so we get something into it.
And Dave is real good about getting back. I've I've called him on more than one occasion. I feel guilty doing it because I know, I know how busy you are, but there's some things that we just got to get finished or have an answer for. But but I know, I know how busy you are and how understaffed you are, and we've gone down this path before.
And like, he and I have talked about this quite some time ago. He was in agreement at that time, he's saying he still is, so. I think we need to continue to pursue that.
And that may be a topic for one of our work sessions, too. Okay.
Very good.
Charlie?
Just kind of piggybacking off of what maybe an idea that popped into my head while you were speaking, Mark, was. NACO's opening that West Office in Oglala. I wonder if they would staff it with the resource. If we, if they knew that this was a need for counties. I don't know if any other counties are in the panhandle, or is it same situation for. That we're in, but if there are, well, maybe it's something we communicate to NACO and say, hey, if you had. An in-house lawyer at the NACO West Office, could that person buzz out? To be at our meetings, you know, or to, you know, be a be an entertainer or something like that for us.
The other thing that that has just recently happened is, you know, Doug Warner was out here working for the Attorney General's Office, but he was doing files in this area. So if I had a conflict or something, Doug would take that as the Attorney General as a. An assistant deputy county attorney. He's retired. They've been trying to fill that spot, and actually, Mike Hilders, I've talked to Mike a number of times. He wanted to get at least three other trial lawyers. In the trial division at the Attorney General's Office, but they've had absolutely no success getting anyone. So we're left without that resource. I think Mike Guinan with the AG's office has been out here a couple of different times, and I think Mike might be taking some of that overflow that. You know, Doug was saying, it's a tremendous resource, and that's gonna put a new worker on. So, not just the Scottville County, but the Empire Canyon.
Wherever he filled in.
Can't get attorneys on here.
Charlie, anything else? Okay, Lisa?
Oh, yeah, I got three things to run by you. I had sent off a quote for laptops. And it was like fourteen hundred dollars a piece. Where do we stand with that? I mean, I guess that was. You you wanted them, or you don't want them, supposed to order them? I guess it comes from general fund, because we don't have a budget for them within the commissioner's budget at all. And we would assume that your tablets would come back. If you take a laptop, so. Need to have some answers.
So John took a tally one day, and I'm I'm keeping my, I'm staying with my iPad, I don't need a laptop.
He might have taken a tally. I'm sorry, it's, I'm I'm taking my own tally.
Yeah, I think that's the quote we need.
Yeah, I want to have mine replaced with a laptop.
You said yes, you do want to do it.
And there was a reason that I changed my mind, I don't remember what it was.
It was, uh, we would protest the access with the maps and. Maps.
Put them in all that stuff later.
I mean, you can access the website, right? I don't know how, is that what it is, you guys? I think one of you.
Most of your own, if anything has ever, ever happens, it can take your.
And he's. With laptops for protests if we needed it. I've, I chose my own.
But if, but if we had our own, they're all set up and ready to go, but that was the reason, because we're gonna. Robert had talked about paperless protests, and so all of that would be on. That's the one that.
Well, but then he provides you, that's for that week. Is that what you just said?
That's what he did.
So you, it's either you want them all the time, or during protest, you're gonna have one. Is that what I'm understanding, you guys?
That's what he's done for the last two or three, four years. He's provided laptops during. Well, I I hate to say it, and I hate to think about fourteen hundred dollars. I agree, I don't use mine.
I don't use that either, it's just.
Resource to have.
Right, and if somebody else in the building can use it more efficiently. Then that's.
Or, I don't know, she's still can use it for jury duty and such.
But there.
So get them all. Three?
Four, I think four, we're talking, you're saying one.
Yeah, you want.
But he's not.
But this is all the time, Ken, so during the week of protest, you got one. So will you use it outside of here, I guess?
You use it everywhere.
I use my own for everything else, because I have all my personal stuff on it, all my business stuff and everything else, and I brought it to protest last year. Used it fine, I didn't have any issues with it, but if we're gonna go to something different.
But they're gonna give you a tap, they're gonna give you a laptop that week anyway. Well, it will, it's just a matter, will you use it outside the meetings? Will you access your emails so you see emails? Because I know that's been a problem for some of you. I think you're getting information and you're not.
No, it runs down pretty fast, and it's, I'm more friendly with the laptop than this.
Kelly has.
Yes, Kelly.
Robert, were you talking about having a shared drive for protests? In gene, sorry. Yes.
And what does that mean to us?
Well, I need this cord. To plug into my laptop to have my email and everything, so. There's a shared drive, all of you could get to it from them.
More information.
You know, I don't know. But John.
Five yeses, Lisa.
Five yes. I think that's.
No, he said, he was getting yesed, okay. It was my understanding that you would have a number pad, too. So he's looking at a bigger size. My, it would, it would be bigger than what I'm holding right here.
Would it be as big as mine? I have a number pad.
Probably. Yeah, where I've got a tiny. And you want me to take it out of the general fund? Okay.
Okay, that's one thing.
What's that?
You had three, you said. No, you you have three items to discuss.
She has four.
No, they just said five. Yes, you are. So as long as all the iPads are coming back. I want, I just want you all to know, and I'm patting myself on the back, eighty thousand dollar COVID grant came in. Mentioned, so, so the last of the COVID grants. I don't know, I did a lot of paperwork on it this last year, and it's for disinfectants and stuff to kill the germs, so it came through this. I don't know. I did a lot of paperwork on it this last year. It's for disinfectants and stuff to kill the germs. So it came through this um, airport meeting. Okay, their attorney cannot meet January twenty-ninth. So are you still interested in board on, board to board? And we, we can meet soon. This one they, this one they want there. Yes, they want their.
I think it's their decision to make, not ours.
I think, but I think you need to have just a core meeting. With, you're going to have their administrative staff, Jerry, and then you guys. We need to see where, where they stand. They're doing some stuff out there and see where they're, what they will offer. I think. Well, they said the first or the second, but do you need all five commissioners here for that? And when they say they'll bring three of their people, how come they can bring three from their board and we can only bring?
That's their decision.
Is it?
If they have a seven.
Of course, but they have a five-member board.
Well, that's because we indicated that our board wanted a board on board meeting, so they were going to get at least three of, get their quorum for us. I think so. That's how I took it.
I just didn't.
Yeah, that's how.
Maybe that's how, okay. I'm sorry. I took her message wrong. If you want board to board, we can do that. We can meet so much sooner if we just take Russ and whoever, myself. Go and talk and see what they're doing.
I'm really not interested. Full board there.
Why?
Because I want everyone to be apprised and in on all the discussions. There's so much, there's so much, there's so much that gets left out from one meeting to the next. When you get, when, when you, when I, when I pick on Russ here. But when Russ tries to tell me what happened at the meeting, he leaves ninety percent out of it. He tells me ten percent of the good stuff. Rest of it, he leaves out. So I want the full board there. I prefer their full board there. But there's a lot of questions that keep coming up that is not, that are not getting answered. How much are they getting for rent off of these things? That's, I mean, I've been asking that question for two months now. We don't know.
I think we did have a number at one time.
Oh, we know with the total rent, he was, you know, per individual, where did he get?
We did have one big number that all of it was, remember that?
Yeah.
Tell the number.
Um, so if you want board to board, then they're saying their afternoon of the first or, and I mean, this is when you put it off four or five more weeks. That's the deal.
That's better than.
The first of February, that's two days.
Well, yeah, I'm saying if we would have a smaller meeting and at least find out what they're doing so I can prepare NERMA, you could do it next week.
We got to meet next week with.
Why don't you do the prep work and then we'll make a decision with the whole, I, 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 I'm not disagreeing with what Charlie says, if we want to do full board.
Well, then set a date.
Get, get something set up and then we'll go for it.
Can everybody text Lisa what you.
Let's set a date of either the first or the second.
Anytime on the second.
If you need to meet with someone prior to that, do it.
We meet with him every week.
And so if you need to do that to get some things ironed out.
What I was going to suggest on that is Lisa. We can ask them for whatever you guys recommend that they bring.
Yeah, now we're up to February.
First and fucking Thursday and Friday. Are you sure she didn't mean today, yesterday afternoon or today?
Well, how do you set up to, um, how do you publicize a meeting for yesterday?
That's what I'm saying.
Not safe. She said, if you don't want to wait for the next meeting, our attorney would be available the afternoon of the first or anytime on the second. And that was a text that came in or an email that came in today.
Because that meeting was originally scheduled for when?
We're trying for the twenty-ninth.
Yeah, the twenty-ninth anyway. We're only talking three days later.
Well, it's a Thursday and a Friday.
But it's. It would be a special meeting. Doesn't matter.
Right.
Let's, let's shoot, let's shoot for the Thursday.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it Friday.
Let's do, let's do Thursday, see if we can get it set up for Thursday, the first.
And they would be available the afternoon of the first.
That would be fine. Set it up for two o'clock.
Two?
I don't know. I just threw it out just to keep things moving.
Well, I'm going to have to publish, so I'm trying to write stuff down.
Everybody all right with two o'clock?
Yep.
All right, we'll put her at two. Okay, Lisa, what else do you have?
That's all I have.
Okay. Dave, you have anything? Okay, Kurt? Jean? Heather?
April, so yeah, I just recommend that people kind of watch their earnings, wait five days until they throw our claims period and have been over a million dollars for the last couple of months.
What I would do, I would, I would send an email out. Because there's no, there's really not that many in here that just heard what you said. Well, it'd be, it'd be good, you could send, she could send an email out and reminding people. How's that?
Did just have to make our big bond payments.
Is uh, can you tell me um that December receipts, is it an up, down comparable to last or? Higher. Eight million in tax receipts collected in December. In April.
Heather, Carla, you have anything? Robert? Let's have her. And when, when, when will that be?
Do we need to request a special? One? You're going to help us know when to do? Okay.
And you'll send us a, a email telling us that you passed it, correct? Right?
Did the governor?
Which one?
Yeah, but you're, you're in the upper fifty, so I think we'll be okay, Robert.
Remember that? I'm very did.
Okay. Anybody, all right, anybody else? Anything on legislation? Anything we need to know? Uh, legislate, legislature does start tomorrow. So if you want to watch, I've, I've got my DVR set. Again. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.